This is the regular meeting of the Belfour City Council. It's Monday, June 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the evening. There are no reportable actions from our closed session meeting. Call to order may or announce that before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for a public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Santenaz.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here.
At this time, I will give the invocation and followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance provided by Jim DiLalonga, our Director of Economic Development. Please stand with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to give you thanks for all the blessings that you've given to our city. We're especially mindful of the fact that we've gone through a year of trauma, a lot of trauma, and that we've recovered from it and are improving and going in the right direction, thanks to your guiding hand. Be with us as we deliberate those things before us this evening to give us the right decisions to make our city Belfower better. We also would like to remember all of our first responders, our sheriff deputies, and those that would take care of our nation in the military as we seek to have their lives saved and make sure that they continue to do their best work in our behalf. Please be with us as those things that before us that are difficult, we are fair and mindful of those that would give testimony. And in his name we pray, amen. All right, due to legal requirements, as the redistricting process, we will consider Public Hearing Item Number 11A ahead of the rest of the agenda. Mr. Stewart, please.
This is consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the redrawing of election district boundaries. Ms., our city clerk, Myra, will have the brief staff report for you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Just a brief introduction to the item. The California Elections Code requires that every 10 years, cities with bi-district election systems use new census data to review and if needed redraw district lines to reflect how local populations have changed. This process, called redistricting, ensures all districts have nearly equal population. The redistricting process for the city of Belfower must be completed by April 17th, 2022. This is the second of four required hearings for the current process. And we have with us our consultant from National Demographics, Justin Levitt, who will provide the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you for the introduction and thank you to everyone who is here tonight listening and everyone who's participated in the process. My name is Dr. Justin Levitt and I'm here to provide an overview of redistricting, give you an update on where we are, and kind of talk a little bit about next steps moving forward here. So for those of you who are hearing this for the first time, redistricting is something that is required every 10 years following the release of the latest census or taking of the latest census. Every jurisdiction that uses district elections is required to look at their voting districts and determine whether or not they need to be adjusted to account for population changes over the previous period. This particular cycle was notable because so many cities, including Belfower, switched to district elections over the last 10 years. And so this year, over 500 jurisdictions will be completing the districting process. In addition, the census data, which you know has been somewhat delayed, means that the final adoption date has been pushed back to April 17th, 2022 so that it can be implemented for the November election. And so what our process kind of looks like here today moving forward is continuing to take testimony and listen to the community on the current districts and the extent to which they serve the city's needs. And what, if anything, needs to change or be adapted in the current district lines. Over the course of the next few months, we'll be increasing our level of community outreach, especially once we have the final data set. This includes having hearings and workshops and tools and using data and analysis to suggest or potentially look into possible changes to the district lines if necessary. As you mentioned, COVID has very much impacted this process by delaying... require for public hearings, a minimum for public hearings. This is the second of those public hearings. And at least two additional public hearings must happen once we have the data in place to be able to look at whether or not changes are necessary and suggest changes and adopt the final map if necessary. One of the things that we're going to be talking more about as we go through this next stage of the process are the factors that we have to consider. AB 849, the Fair Maps Act, basically has created a set of rank-ordered criteria that we now have to follow. And they are in this priority order. On the left, we see federal laws, things that the Supreme Court and the federal government say that we must comply with. Equal population is the big one. Are the districts substantively equal in terms of the number of total residents? I'll show you some data on this here in a second, but the question is whether the current districts are balanced or not so that we might be looking at, so we can predict whether or not we're going to need major changes or not to those lines. We also have to consider the Federal Voting Rights Act. Groups that have historically faced discrimination or barriers to registration and voting have their rights protected by the Federal Voting Rights Act. And while race or ethnicity cannot be used as the main or even the predominant factor, the Federal Voting Rights Act describes a process for considering this as part of our discussion of communities of interest. In the middle column, are there new ranked criteria that the state has provided under AB 849? First, we have to consider contiguity. This is the idea that all parts of a district must touch. So for example, you couldn't have a district that was a couple of blocks south of the 91 freeway and a few blocks at the very north end of the city, completely unconnected from each other. Now, each district has to be one solid piece. Then we have to look at neighborhoods in communities of interest. These are areas that should be kept together for the purposes of good representation. These could be things that have like a shared history of development or shared interests, for example, along a freeway corridor, a river, commercial districts even, along a major business corridor. Then we also, they also require easily identifiable boundaries to the extent possible following roads or subdivision lines that make sense to residents. And then fourth, they identify compactness, not bypassing one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. And then they also prohibit, in this list of criteria, using political party information, favoring or discriminating against a political party. And so because our elections are nonpartisan anyway, it's not a factor that we are looking at or considering as part of this process. On the right-hand column, once we've looked at all of the other criteria, the law allows us to take into account other traditional districting principles. For example, respecting the voters' wishes is the idea that the voters of the city have elected a council and that districting shouldn't be used as a way of particularly targeting or deliberately targeting a council member. Minimizing the voters that switch is the idea that if we do have to make changes, that it should have the least impact as possible on people who might have their election cycle switched. So they might, we might be enfranchising one group of voters to elect in 2020 and then again in 2022. So where they have elections every two years, while another group of voters might be somewhat disenfranchised by having six years go between the two old city council elections they could participate in. And as part of this process, we want to really dive into the demographics. So as part of this process, I'm going to switch here to something that we want to show you. In addition to the demographics that I'm presenting here tonight, I wanted to encourage your residents to look for our story map online. And our story map is an opportunity to really dive into the demographics in a way that we just can't in a 15-minute presentation. The story map in particular will allow you and your residents to look at all of the different data sets that we're using as part of this process so we can look at not only the racial demographics. For example, here we have Latino citizen voting age population. You see here, we have even a legend that shows that the areas that are in purple or blue have relatively few Latinos, while the warmer colors, the reds and oranges, are majority Latino. We also have a lot of socioeconomic information. For example, we can look at where we see more apartment complexes, multifamily housing, where we see people who speak Spanish at home, and the percent of households that have children and how that varies in different parts of the city. The story map also allows a user to select a district and find the info, all the demographic information about that particular district as well if you want to get a sense of what the current districts look like demographically. As we look at draft maps over the summer, we will continue to update our story map to include any of the drafts in addition to the current district boundaries, which you can see. And this map allows us to, for example, when we're in the map, we can zoom in a bit and take a look at more detail if we wanted to see where the district lines are, for example. It's a really powerful tool and I would encourage you, this will be linked on the city's redistricting website for us to play around with or show later. Just to, just to continue on, this is part of a package of map drawing tools that we are looking at, we are in the process of creating. We finally started getting, moving on with our, with our hosting service, on getting the online tools up. And many of them will be available in the next two weeks. We already have the map viewer up and we're working on getting all the other online tools up and we will, of course, be putting them on the city website once they are available. We also hope that as part of this process that we can continue to work on outreach and working with your community to look at the, look at the, look at the process, look at the maps and suggest changes if needed. This is really still in the beginning stages. We're not going to get the data from the census until late September at the earliest, but most likely in early October. And so we still have quite a few months while we're kind of looking at this in a broad sense before we're going to really dig down into those numbers. We hope that during the winter, so from December, January, February, we're going to be looking at revising the maps if needed, holding the public hearings on, on those line changes so that by April 17th, we'd be able to adopt and submit. The website, drawbellflower.org, will continue to have up-to-date information on Belfower's redistricting efforts. So please continue to check in there to, to look at our timeline and look at our process. Now, before I, before I turn it back over, I did want to just show you what we think of as, you know, a likely picture of what the demographics of the current districts are. And so what we have is the estimated populations using the census of projections and growth rates. And the current district boundaries are still under that 10% maximum deviation. Actually, they came in at 6.8% deviation, which is well under that 10% deviation. So, you know, obviously, we will check again. We will continue to monitor this as we get the full census count. But our projections are that it is likely that the current district lines will still be population balanced, that the growth we've seen in the city over the last 10 years has been spread out throughout the city and not particularly concentrated in any area. And is likely that the current districts may still be within that 10% deviation. And so with that, I would like to turn it back over to the city and I look forward to hearing your, answering your questions and hearing your feedback today, particularly on your communities of interest and the current district map and what works and what doesn't work in the map.
Thank you for your report and we're going to open this up to questions. And council, historically, whenever you were on YouTube, then I would ask you individually if you want to ask a question. Going to change that since we're all in the building now. And if anyone has a question, simply ask your question. And if you don't have a question, that's cool too. So at this point in time, does anyone have a question of our report that was given just now?
Mayor, I have a question. Doctor, thank you so much for your presentation. It's, as usual, it's very informative. Just a couple of questions. I know the goal is, since we have five councilmember seats in the city of Belfower, so theoretically, the goal is to make it 20% population for each district. So by law, how much deviation are we allowed to from the 20%?
So basically, we can think about the maximum total deviation, the difference between the largest district and the smallest district should be under 10% of a district. So a single district might be 5% over or 5% under. A single, and then, you know, the others would be somewhere less than that. So if one district was 5% over and another was 4% under, you would be at 9% deviation. So that would still be legal.
Okay, very good, thank you. And my next question is maybe for the city clerk or to you, doctor. Did we receive any feedback from the first public hearing?
We did receive one correspondence and it was not necessarily regarding our district boundaries. It was general statements regarding the process and NDC. And then we did receive two requests to be updated on the progress. So we've signed them up for our E-Citizen list.
Okay, very good, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santenaz. Does anyone else have any questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, no questions per se, but more so compliments. I just want to commend staff. I've seen a tremendous amount of efforts from a social media standpoint and I also believe that it was also available at the, at the last street fest, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm seeing a lot of effort on our staff and to really get this information out and get people engaged and participating. So just want to compliment, thank you, sir.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions, I need to open the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so the motion by councilmember Hamada, seconded by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton. Without objection, that will be the order. If anyone allows, wants to allow to be speak, please let them in.
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
So the motion made by Mr. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, seconded by Mr. Hamada to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. So anybody want to make a motion on this item?
I don't believe a motion is required. If so, it would just simply be to receive and file the information.
Okay. And so you have enough information to go forward with this. But we've just completed this, correct? We'll now resume the rest of the agenda for the evening and the city council announcements and presentations. So I will start with, last week, the city of Belfower reopened city facilities to the general public. These facilities include City Hall, Belfower Sheriff Station, and the Public Works Office, which were opened with some modifications. Appointments are no longer required for walk-in services and masks are required in order to enter. Additional safety measures have been implemented in order to help ensure the safety of all visitors and employees. For more information, please visit the city's website at www.bellflower.org. Mr. Ray Dutton.
Why, thank you, Mr. Mayor Coops. In response to our community being concerned over the increase of use of illegal fireworks, Belfower Sheriff and our public safety personnel have adopted a new enforcement strategy that is being deployed this year. If illegal fireworks are observed from any residential property by the personnel or the persons or persons lighting them cannot be identified. That means if the sheriff or the people responding to an area from complaints see things shooting off from that parcel of property, then the property owner may receive a $2,000 administrative citation in the mail and be responsible for the payment. If you have any questions or concerns about the firework enforcement in Belfower, please call the Belfower Sheriff's Substation at 562-925-0124. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, first off, good evening, Belfower. I want to advise the community that the Belfower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their monthly morning mingle, which will take place tomorrow, Tuesday, June 29th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. For more information, please call the Belfower Chamber of Commerce at 562-867-71744. And it's a very joyful gathering, so. Okay, looking forward to meeting people there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, good evening, Belfower. As we've heard tonight, this evening, the city of Belfower has begun our redistricting process. The redistricting process occurs every 10 years following the release of the census results. It is an opportunity to redraw district lines based on population changes indicated in the census at the state, county, and city level. Residents can submit maps of their own and get involved in the process. For more information, you can visit our redistricting website at www.drawbellflower.org or email redistricting@bellflower.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Santenaz.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The city of Belfower is excited to announce the return of Summer Street Fair concerts. These events are free and open to the public and are not subject to mandated reservations. The first concert was held last Thursday. The second concert is scheduled for next Thursday, July 8th, at 6:30 PM. All concerts will begin promptly at 6:30 and end at 8:30 PM. For more information, please call the Parks and Recreation Department at 562-804-1424, extension 2261. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santenaz. At this time, we are going, the city council, the city of Belfower, would like to congratulate and recognize the Niños Latinos Andudos Foster Care and Adoption Agency, also known as NLU, for being chosen as the 2021 Nonprofit of the Year by California State Senator Bob Archileta of the 32nd Senate District. For the past six years, legislators across California have selected a nonprofit of the year in their district in celebration of California's Nonprofits Day, which was last week on June 23rd. The NLU is a nonprofit organization here in Belfower that recruits and trains English, Spanish, and bilingual-speaking foster parents and places foster children in their homes while monitoring their general welfare and attending to their needs. NLU also provides adoption services and is currently assisting in the adoptions of children in Los Angeles, Riverside, San Bernardino, and Orange Counties. So therefore, congratulations to the new, to the NLU on the accomplishment. And I want to thank you for your hard work and dedication to the Belfower community. And we have prepared a presentation here that will be sent to those that are involved and in charge of the, and it says here, Niños Latinos Andos Foster Care and Adoption Agency for being named 2021 California Nonprofit of the Year by Senator Bob Archileta. The city of Belfower honors your contributions and dedication to the community, signed by Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and Councilmember Sunny Santenaz, dated June 23rd, 2021. And we'll have this mailed to your agency to commemorate this great honor that we've given to you tonight. Public comments, Mr. Stewart. This is the time. Is there someone online that wants to give us some comments or, or a comment on the presentation I just made?
Yes, this is Guri.
Okay, go right now.
Guri Minaan, I'm the CEO of Niños Latinos Unidos.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate what you did for Niños Latinos, which is a very good nonprofit. We work so hard to help all, not even the Latino, all nationality childrens, all Caucasian, African-American, all kinds, not only Latinos.
All right, well, we appreciate your good work in the city of Belfower on Alondra Boulevard. You've been with us a long time and to get special recognition from Senator Bob Archileta is indeed an honor and we wanted to couple that with our appreciation of your work.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we'll continue on. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
If you'd like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it'll appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, simply press the number six to raise your hand. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. So is there anybody in the waiting room that would like to speak to us on public comments?
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you for that. So, Mr. Stewart, we'll move on to item 13A.
This is consideration of possible action to adopt Resolution Number 21-42, a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2020/2021 Annual Action Plan to reprogram the remaining Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Relief Funds available for completion of the Emergency Resident, It's Residential Assisted Program. And I believe you have Ms. Carla Pineda to make the staff report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Let me just share my screen. Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, staff is seeking the city council's direction on the reprogramming of the remaining Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds.
Carla, I just want to let you know that we cannot see your screen.
We can't, let's see them.
If you run into a problem, Carla, I can bring it up on mine.
Okay, let's see. Can you see it now?
No, I'm sorry. We still can't see it.
Okay, I'll, I'll share it. You just tell me when to switch slides, okay?
Okay. Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of, of the city council. Tonight, staff is seeking the city council's direction on the reprogramming of the remaining Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds, also known as CDBG-CV. An ad hoc subcommittee was formed at the May 24th, 2020 council meeting to provide recommendations as to the programming of the remaining funds. As a quick overview, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act, made funding available for local governments to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus under the CARES Act. The city received a total amount of about $1.19 million of CDBG-CV funding from HUD. This funding was allocated to an emergency resident relief program, which provided rent and mortgage assistance payments to eligible low-income Bellflower households. At the completion of the program, staff has determined that there will be $825,784 remaining in CDBG-CV funds. HUD established a six-year period of performance and expenditure deadline for these funds, which is June 30th of 2026, with the requirement that at least 80% of the funding must be expended no later than the end of the third year of the period of performance, which is June 30th, 2023. You can change a slide. So here's a recap of the initial funding and expenditures of the CDBG-CV funds. There's about $238,000 that was allocated for planning and administration, which is capped at 20% of the total allocation. And $951,784 was allocated for the Emergency Residential Relief Program. About $143,000 was expended for planning and administration costs. And $125,000 in rent and mortgage assistance payments will be expended following program completion. The remaining, the remaining budget for additional planning and administration is about $94,000. And the remaining CDBG-CV programming funds are $825,784. At the regular council meeting of May 24th, 2021, the city council formed the ad hoc subcommittee to explore and recommend programs to reallocate the, the remaining CDBG funds to address community needs in response to coronavirus. This table lists the ad hoc subcommittee's recommendations for five programs, the funding amounts allocated for each program, and approximately how many households and businesses could potentially benefit from these programs. I will now go into a little more detail on each program. The recommendation for the new Small Business Startup Loan Program is to add $130,000 in CDBG-CV funds to the previously approved CDBG funding of $120,000, for a total of $250,000 in the program. This amount would provide five forgivable loans of up to $50,000 for the businesses, for the business startups at the Bellflower Center. And these loans would be forgiven over a five-year term. You can change a slide. A food insecurity program with an allocation of $100,000 could provide approximately 50 qualifying households $150 in groceries on a bi-weekly basis for up to six months. Staff will work with Superior Grocers and Aldi to fulfill preset list of groceries, which would be picked up by the qualified households at the participating grocery stores. Applicants would be screened based on their household income and negative impact due to the coronavirus. The next recommendation from the ad hoc subcommittee is to allocate $150,000 to the youth, to youth, family, and senior services in response to COVID-19. Staff will prepare a request for proposals, also referred to as an RFP, to local providers of community services that address various community, community needs such as foster care, childcare, mental health care, and any other assistance offered that would aid eligible households who have been negatively impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. $345,784 is recommended to provide another round of an emergency resident relief program. This program would provide up to $2,000 per month for up to three months of rent or mortgage assistance to approximately 50 house, 50 eligible low-income Bellflower households. Payments would be made by the city on behalf of the households. Residents would have to be income-qualified and have been negatively impacted by the pandemic. Due to the time-intensive work involved in this program, staff recommends that this round of rent and mortgage assistance payments be administered by the housing consultant, Avantgard. Of the $345,784, $300,000 would be used to assist Bellflower households. And the remaining $45,784 will be budgeted for the administration of the program. You can change a slide. And the recommendation to allocate $100,000 for the small business assistance in the form of grants, this would provide $10,000 in grants to 10 eligible Bellflower businesses that have been negatively impacted by the pandemic. CDBG eligibility requirements would remain in place for CDBG-CV funds, specifically the low moderate, the low moderate jobs or the low moderate area requirements, depending on where the pandemic, where, I apologize, on where the business is located within the city. Per HUD guidance, these funds could be used to provide assistance to support entrepreneurs or existing businesses, avoid or reverse job loss caused by the pandemic, or provide technical assistance to establish, stabilize, and expand microenterprises to revitalize communities and local economies affected by the pandemic. With that, staff recommends for the city council to adopt Resolution Number 21-42, substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan to reprogram the remaining CDBG-CV funds, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That completes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions along with our housing consultant, Anna Lanu of Avantgard, who has been assisting us as well as other cities with CDBG-CV programs.
Thank you very much for that comprehensive explanation. And I also want to thank our subcommittee, which was composed of Councilmember Raymond Hamada and Councilmember Victor Sanchez, for spending the time to think through this process as to how these money should be allocated. And if there's any council members like to question staff, now's the time.
Well, maybe a question staff, but I just maybe wanted to start again on behalf of my colleague, Councilman Sanchez. And I, again, we want to first thank, again, our colleagues for putting us on the subcommittee. We were, we were able to, again, get a better understanding of, you know, how the, you know, program was, what was implemented. And, and then we were able to ask how, kind of, you know, that, that tough question. Why, why wasn't, you know, money, like, able to be spent on, 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 you know, again, last year's program? And so we were able to take a more comprehensive look and, and sort of that big picture of an analysis of what's needed in this community. And again, you know, we, we did concur that, you know, the rent assistance is, is vital. The food insecurity is vital, helping businesses is vital. But there were other programs we felt that were in need of serving our, you know, local residents. And some of those were, again, we've been told there are, you know, hundreds of kids that are in, from Bellflower, that are being served under the foster care program. And also kids with child abuse and youth that are dealing with mental health issues. And one other big issue was, you know, childcare in town. Is there enough childcare to serve the community and so that the parents can get back to work? And so we had brought up some other, really, I know that's a broad category, the youth, family, seniors. And I think we touched base also on possibly serving veterans, if possible, through this program. So we took the numbers, we started, you know, moving it around. And I, I think we were able to, you know, fairly appropriate it to, to each category. Again, as I mentioned, we put emphasis on, on the rent relief. And again, that's, that's, that's deserving of the, of the lion's share. But I think overall, it was a good balance. And I think this money could be well-served out there. So I'll, I'll let my, my colleagues, Keltwin Sanchez, add anything.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. First off, I'll echo those same sentiments. I think that when we met and were able to come together on these, on what we've proposed today, what the committee has suggested, I think it's a good way of distributing the, the funds throughout the community and various needs and areas within the community. So I, I'm glad with the work that we've done. So I think it takes cares of, of the businesses, takes cares of housing insecurities, it takes care of food insecurities, and supports other programs out there that are really supportive of change and specifically in the youth and senior section. So I'm excited. Thank you, Councilmember Hamada.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Any other council members have any questions or comments as to what's being presented?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank, thank you, Carla, and thank you, staff, for this presentation. And I want to thank, again, the ad hoc committee for the efforts on trying to distribute this funding. My first question is on the, the food insecurity program. You mentioned about qualifying households. So do you have a definition about what a qualifying household is?
Carla, you want me to take that one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So qualifying household would have to meet the income requirements as prescribed by HUD and CDBG. They have to be low-income. And you also have to have, you have to show some sort of imp, negative impact from COVID-19. So they would make a self-certificated certification statement in their application. And we would check their income qualifications.
I see. Okay, thank you. And then on the youth, family, senior services, do we currently have a similar program wherein we give funding to a provider who provide services to the foster care, childcare, and mental health services?
Councilmember Sandianez, I'm not sure we have that through our programs. There might be some, some other department in the city, but not through economic development and housing.
So that may be something new to us. Okay, I'm just trying to, to kind of figure out the logistics on sending out the RFP and then evaluating and all those things. Okay. And then on the emergency rent assistance, you included a $45,784 for administration of the program. So who will administer this rental assistance program?
Avantgard and their staff will administer that for us. We will be working with them closely as we have just finished, or we're in the, in the works of finishing the program that we currently have in place now. But the, the labor intensity of that program is huge. And we're short a person right now. And as we get this going, we'll be bringing someone new on. And so we thought it would be a good idea to, to have our housing consultant, who's an expert at this stuff, take this on since the funds are there. And that could help economic development start, maybe focus a little bit more on some of the economic development, things going on in the city that we can work on.
And, and currently, do they have the staffing to do it?
They do. We definitely checked with them before we, we threw them in the fire. And they were up for it.
All right, very good. And then finally, Jim, at the May 24th meeting, I asked a question of the staff to look into the feasibility of using some of this funding to pay for the food being served at the homeless shelter. Did, did the staff look into that?
Yes, council member, initially, that was, we figured that that might be an issue, that HUD would not allow that. And so we finally got a response back from our HUD rep. And I'm going to a slide right now that would help us out with that. Turns out that that would be eligible. And so we could do that. And it would, we found out that the budget that Mercy House has for food at the homeless shelter, the New Hope Shelter, is $130,000 for the next fiscal year. And so if council decides to want to try to fund that, staff made a quick guess at how you could potentially reallocate the funds in the, in the matrix here in front of you. So, I mean, we could, that can be adjusted very easily. But this is just a guess, trying to keep a few of these as whole as possible and still hitting, hitting the variety that was spoken about earlier.
Yeah, I would certainly hope that we can use this funding. But I would defer to the ad hoc committee, since they really did the, a lot of the grunt work, to see if this reallocation is, is feasible. Because I really want to save some money into our general fund. That was my main objective back then. So I'm glad that staff was able to, to kind of check it out and find out that it's qualifying. So I guess, again, I would defer to the subcommittee, the ad hoc committee, see what they think about the reallocation.
This is the first I've, I've seen these numbers, but, and I'm, and I'm looking at it. And now knowing that the shelter would qualify, again, this is, this money was for the entire community. So this shelter is part of the community. So, and I don't think it, it impact the other categories greatly. Just right off the cuff, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. I'll, I'll look to my colleague on, on the subcommittee.
Absolutely. I would concur with that. And this is the first that, that I've seen it as well. And I'm glad that staff were able to find out that information for this specific meeting. That cover, that would cover all our bases, if you really think about it. So I think I'm supportive of that. Absolutely.
Thank you. We, we apologize for the late notice on this. We just, it was all, we got notice about it. And the budget number today, actually, from Mercy House, to be able to put this together, we weren't sure until after the staff report and everything was completed and, and published.
I've got a question for you, Jim. Can these amounts allocated be adjusted? Or is, once we do it tonight, it's good for the next three years?
No, they can be adjusted. We would do something similar that we're doing tonight to adjust them. We'd have to publicize this and do another substantial amendment to that particular fiscal year's plan for this. And we could easily do this. For example, we could find out that the food insecurity program at $50,000 is, could be potentially over-budgeted. And we could reduce that and throw that money into another pot. And then we would do another substantial amendment just like this.
My thought was, I agree with what has been said about supporting the homeless shelter. But we're kind of in a new area with the providing food for those in the community outside the shelter. Why don't we give a three-to-six-month experiment to see how many people participate in this before we give money? We know we have funding for that, for the homeless shelter. But let's see how well this is received. And if it doesn't go forward like we think it will, then let's allocate it towards the homeless shelter. Or do you want to absolutely do a figure for the homeless shelter now to save our, our regular public budget?
Yeah, I, I would say let's use the, the money for the shelter now. Because, correct or wrong, Jim, historically, there's always been extra unused funding for, especially for rental assistance, historically. So we can always shift money from that category.
Well, in this, in this case, yeah, we, we thought we'd have a lot more rental assistance applications than we did. And that's why we have such a large overage of funds. And so in addition, last year, if you remember, we budgeted the overage of, or the unspent funds of $120,000 for the Bellflower Center, because those didn't get spent. So we could, we may have a more emergency resident assistance funds in six months than we thought we would. So it's, that, that could be an over-budgeted item. We'll have to wait and see.
My concern always has been that when you live in Bellflower and you have minimal amount of food in your house, and you go to some of the food distributions that are provided by and you go to some of the food distributions that are provided by the school or the churches, you're getting some basic needs met there. But you're not receiving many of the things you need to conduct a household, like laundry detergent and toothpaste and soap. And, you know, I can't have a budget, I mean, a menu of just strictly grapes and oranges and bananas, or whatever it is they have, that they're giving out free. There are so many things that need to be augmenting what is used in these homes. And I felt as though this gave us an opportunity to allow people to go to the market. And if they want to buy food, that's great. But I'm sure we're going to have on there some sundry items to be able to carry on a decent lifestyle in their abode. And maybe Jim's right in saying that we want to make sure that people have a chance to catch up on their rent and on their payments on their home. But, and that money may not be all spent. And because we've allocated all there, then we could also use it over at the homeless shelter. But because we have the option of looking at this, I think this is a great report, and I'm willing to vote on as it's presented, because there's a lot of thought that's gone into this. But I'd like a chance to reevaluate it in six months to see how these programs are being received. That's just what I'll say about that. Anyway, Ray, I haven't had a chance to have you chime in. I'm sure you have something interesting to say.
Yeah, thankfully, we get, you know, some money like this, federal money, that can help people. Whether it's the homeless shelter or residence, it's, the money is for people that are hurting. Just like Mr. Hamada said, that, you know, they're all residents. I am for what's presented, and I think it's a good idea to reevaluate. If the money, we've, you know, we're kind of going off the hip right now with this whole money issue with the last round that we gave out for residence, for behind rent and some business help or whatever. So with this round, we're kind of learning as we go. We're kind of writing the rules. But your idea is reevaluate it in six months or so. That's a great idea, and I would support that.
Do you think six months is appropriate? Or does anybody else like the idea? Or do you want to do it three months? Or you want to do it in a year? We've got a three-year program here.
Well, I think, let me just put another idea here. I think what's critical is the timing of when can we charge this money into the homeless shelter? Is there something like an accounting period? Because we don't want to miss that.
I think we get invoiced every month. Mr. Stewart could probably come in.
We do, we don't know how to fund it just yet with Mercy House. We have to work that with them, whether we're going to reimburse them or pay it upfront or whatever. We still have to work that portion out if the council approves it tonight. So I don't have a quick answer for you on that.
But don't we get an invoice every month?
Every month.
So once we pay them, that's...
Well, yeah, do we pay in advance or do we pay behind?
We pay for a month per the service after it's been provided on that.
I guess a question to Jim. If we pay, let's say, Mercy House out of general fund, can we still charge that later on to this program?
I might defer to Tay on that. It sounds like it's an accounting thing where we could move some money around to take that into account. But it's possible. I'll leave it at that unless Tay wants to comment.
Tay on the line? Okay. Tay, if you have anything you want to offer, we're ready to hear.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Members of the city council.
Go right, go ahead.
Actually, I'm not quite sure what the requirements are for the CBG, CB requirement. So generally, there's a commencement, authorization, starting point. So since that time, if we incur expenditures that are qualified, we should be able to apply unless, unless we have to go with the council authorization date, which is tonight, the public hearing day, and costs that are incurred tonight and forward. So I'm not quite sure what the HUD requirements are regarding this. So we'll have to look into it and then get back to you.
Thank you, Tay.
Okay.
A follow-up question. So is it safer, Tay, to kind of authorize some money now so that at least that line item, that account is open for HUD?
Yes. Yes, I would agree with that. I don't exactly know the HUD requirement. But if you authorize it tonight, then I think expenditures we incur from this point forward will definitely qualify. I just am not sure about the retroactive application prior to council approval.
I don't know if the same rule applies, because in some federal regulations, you need to have the account in the budget to charge expenses against the budget.
Councilmember Santanis, I'm going to have Anna Lanu from Vanguard jump in on this. She's asking through text if she can speak. She has an answer.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, great. So normally with CDBG money, it's, the term is usually within a fiscal year. However, with CV funds specific, you are allowed to reimburse even back to the beginning of the pandemic. So you would be able to reimburse prior to today's date for eligible expenses related to the meal program at the shelter.
Yeah, my question is on the account. Do we need to include the account now when we submit this budget to HUD? I know that the amount can change later on by budget modification. Because sometimes some federal regulations, you cannot add another expense account once you submit the budget.
Maybe I'm not understanding the question.
My question is because we are adding another line item here in terms of food insecurity, right, shelter? Is that what we're trying to do here?
Yes, you can do that. At this meeting, the council is, it's entirely up to the council to make any changes to the draft proposed budget that was published for the public hearing. So this is the perfect time to make those changes.
Right, so what I'm getting at here is, I understand that Mayor Coop's concerned. But at the same time, I want to be safe that we can charge this homeless shelter money into the HUD fund by adding it right now, even with a small amount. So at least it's a placeholder. So for example, instead of $130,000, $30,000 goes to the shelter for now. And then later on, we can always adjust it if more money is available for the shelter. That's what I'm getting at.
Well, it sounds like you might be able to go back to the previous fiscal year at the beginning of COVID and recoup your money for food back the previous fiscal year. So it sounds like you might even be able to increase the number that you've thrown on the table tonight, depending how the funding comes down. So that number may actually grow if we can procure those costs. So I would block out at least a reasonable amount of money for that program now. And then we'll just revisit it in 90 days, like you said before. And then we can ratchet down then, if you want to do that, yeah.
Is that okay, if we can just put $30,000 for homeless shelter?
I think that's a fair amount.
As a placeholder?
Right.
Okay.
And if we, council members, if we decide to change that in the future, we would come back to you with a very similar report as this and have to do another substantial amendment to the entire plan in six months' time.
You were thinking sooner than six months, correct?
Well, I offered six months. But what, when does Jim think he would have enough information to provide us knowledge of how the money's being spent?
That is a good question, Jim. Could you pull that together in 90 days?
That would, that's, well, to get that program up and running, Anna, does this have to go to HUD to get approved?
I want to have a history of how the money's being allocated so we can make a better decision.
Don't hurry it.
Yeah, I think we wait six months, because I think we submit this to HUD, and then we get the okay, and we can move on these programs.
So that'll get us to about January.
So the funds, you have an agreement executed for the entire allocation of CB dollars. So therefore, substantial amendments typically get approved by HUD much quicker than your initial allocation. I would say you will know, you know, you will have approval of your substantial amendment within a week or two. Because the funds are already allocated to you. You're just programming them.
So we can do the, we can do the 90 days. We can do three months instead of six, if you like.
Just so you are able to bring us something that allows us to make a more clear decision. Let's do six months. I think that'll give you enough time to get it up and running.
Appreciate that.
So any more discussion on this item? Has everybody been in agreement as to allocating $30,000 out of the food budget towards the shelter and having a reevaluation in six months? Does that work for everyone? Mr. Hamada, you're okay? Are we reckoning your work here?
Oh, no, well, all right. So just to sort of clarify this on the numbers. So taking $30,000 more out of the $50,000?
Well, the food insecurity program is 100, is that right? It is on this paper.
That's correct.
So we're going to be down to 70 for the local folk and 30 allocated for the homeless shelter.
Got it.
In addition to.
Oh, I see, I see.
The number will still add to 825-784 when we're all sitting down. We're not exceeding that. We're just putting, reprogramming, I mean, 30,000 to take care of.
All right. It was the take from the 100K rather than the 50K.
Yeah, that's where it's coming from. No.
No, that, yeah, that wasn't clear.
But no, it'll be 70 and 30 in that.
Okay, I see, I see.
That's what we're looking for, Sunny, correct? Victor, you're okay? Yep. All right, so do we need a motion to make this work? Or do you want to have any more discussion about any other light items? You're okay on business grants, residential assistance, senior services? A lot of this, they've given a lot of thought to, so I'm reluctant to change anything.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 20-42.
And that be as amended? Is there something that's going to be attached to this?
With the amendment?
With, as amended, but as discussed. As discussed with the different amounts and then the six months.
All right, I'll second that, thank you.
All right, so the motion has been made by Mayor Protam Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Please poll the council.
Mayor Protam Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanis?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, consent calendar. Anybody would like to have a discussion or pull any of the consent calendar items? Or do they need to recuse themselves from anything?
Mayor, I'd like to pull Item 14F for discussion amongst us.
14F, like Frank?
Yeah.
Okay. So 14F will be on the discussion list. Anyone else have anything they want to bring forward?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just pull 14E just for a comment.
All right, 14E.
And 14H for a quick question.
All right, so we got F, E, and H. Anyone else have anything they would like to bring forward? No one has any recusals on this. So let's start with 14F, Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give you some discussion. I know my colleagues don't know some of the backstory on this, because they're all sitting with an email in front of us right now via the city clerk. As we know, on May 10th, Matt Brown accuses pretty much of being raped by the cannabis industry. And that didn't go well. He apologized, and we all know that apology amongst us felt a little short. So with discussion with the city clerk and the city manager, we had some discussion of how the minutes were going to be read. I was pretty adamant about having a perbatim. And after discussion, thought it would be best to leave some of those comments out on both sides. And you're all sitting with an email of Matt Brown not happy. Priscilla Brown is not happy with me either, because I kind of included her with her husband's comments. And it makes it hard when we get an email from Priscilla Brown, from her email account, with Matt's comments on it. It's just, you know, they're one of the same. It's, they're all together, they have the same mindset and whatnot. But I want you guys to decide whether you want all the minutes perbatim. You know, I do not mind it. I chose to take this other road. As you can see, the email here, which we did not include the sexual comments that he made in the minutes. But he's been over my response that I may respond to him or not call him back or something like that. And it was unprofessional, is what he says in this email. So I think we need to have a discussion of how you guys feel if the city clerk needs to rewrite the minutes, if we, you know, don't approve these and rewrite the minutes perbatim? Or do you think they're good enough the way they are? That's the end of my comments.
All right.
What do you guys think?
Sunny, we'll start over on your side there, because we love you so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, that on the May 10 meeting, my name was also mentioned about it. And I just don't want to kind of, for lack of a better word, to re-litigate that cannabis application on Clark in Somerset. It just comes back again and again. So when does it end? And let me just remind you that my vote on that particular application, I stand by my vote. Whatever happens, it's because I explained during the deliberation, it's about the children. You can fault me for that. And I'm going to stand up against you if you fault me for saving the children of Bellflower. And if you go back to the history of cannabis, I was against it from day one. And I guess my, over the months after that, my statement was misquoted in terms of when I said, "It's all about the money." And I stand by that comment. Because when we presented this cannabis measure to the voters, it was voted overwhelmingly by two-to-one margin. That's what I meant. It's all about the money. Because if the voters voted no on the ballot measure, we will not be talking about cannabis at all. So I hope that that statement was going to be put to rest. That's what I meant when I say it's about the money. The voters sided with us. They want it because they want the revenue also. I'm okay as far as the, I just don't want to, to me, life is just too short. We have a lot more things to do. There are so many things ahead of us, and I just don't want to kind of dwell with this anymore. I think the minutes are okay with me as presented. I agree with Councilmember Dutton. We are here to serve our residents. We run for election because we want to make our city better. We cannot make everyone happy, okay? And I get that. But as long as we focus on the good things for the most of Bellflower, not all. You know, because no matter what we do, someone will complain. Someone will not be happy. But I think as long as we have the majority of the voters behind us, I'm happy where I am, I'm happy what I do, and I'm proud of what the council has accomplished over the years. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So your vote would be to leave the minutes as they stand? Okay. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow councilmember, Mayor Protam Dutton. My answer is to leave them as is. I'll make that clear at the beginning here. My reasoning behind it is because I think that it's a fair on both sides. I believe that this is a space to be professional in and to act professional. And I think that the comments that were said to this body on that day, on May 10th, were inappropriate from the get-go. And I think that the response was, you know, warranted. At the end of the day, we must remain on the high ground and stay professional. So I think that minutes the way they are are okay with me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to pretty much echo the same sentiments. But just thinking back, again, I wasn't on the council too long. And, you know, cannabis was before us. And I think it was one of the toughest decisions I ever made. I mean, I had, I went to, I mean, I conducted, I don't know how many personal interviews, be it, you know, city officials from other towns that had it, residents, business people, clergy. And just thinking and reflecting on it much myself. And when it came to, I needed to control it. And the way to control it was to approve it, get it, make sure all the standards are met, the requirements and everything else. I did not want to have 25-plus, look at the illegal establishments out there. That was worse than anything. So, I mean, at the May 10 meeting, I mean, I didn't hear my name specifically, but I could sense too that, again, it was pointed to the council that was there. And, but I think our... And, but I think our standard practice was met. That's what I've always seen here is just more general than, than very, you know, specific. So I'm okay with, again, as I read now. I mean, that's fine. It, it, it says basically what happened and then, then, then it covers it. I mean, there are tapes out there with city clerk that, that can be requested and so on. So I'm good with the minutes as is. And, and again, and to this day, I'm, I'm still supportive of my decision. We have it under control. It's doing well. All right. That's, that's, that's the plus. But we're not spending more money on public safety to deal with it. So I hope that's the case. So I'm going to leave it at that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dutton, we have any concluding comments?
I think I said enough. And I'm, I'm, I'm okay, you know, with the, with the way it is because that was my decision before. Try to take the higher ground and try to be more professional. And then we get an email here that says, "I'm not professional," when I, you know, I pretty much adamant to have it perbatim and I could have. And with discussion with the city manager and city clerk, we chose to, to, you know, let's, let's let it go. Well, guess what? It didn't work. We got it. Hand it right back to us. So now is the time for discussion to let it go, and I'm, I'm willing to let it go.
All right. I agree with what has been said. So we're going to accept the minutes as written. All right. Moving forward, fourteen E, Mr. Um, yes, Ray?
Mr. Hamada, yes. Raymond.
Raymond Hamada, council member.
Just quickly, I just wanted to disclose again, always for the record, I'm a board member for Kingdom Causes, Bellflower. And I'm a volunteer. So with that, I, I can, I can, you know, vote on this matter.
You know, maybe you ought to get letterhead stationery that indicates all the different boards you serve on.
It should be on the profile for. That's why, that's why I do that.
No room for the letter because you'd have so many.
Add one more, but.
All right, fourteen H.
Quickly, to staff, I know that Alvin Guard is, is doing some good work for us. And just a quick one, just thinking on the scope of the work, do they also do any grant writing for us?
That's a, a good question. They haven't. But we could, if there's a grant that comes up, they provide us information on a monthly basis with available grants that we keep an eye on. And it would be outside of the scope of this if they were to do a grant for us. But we could look into that if a grant came up within their expertise area.
Well, at this point, again, I, I just want to make sure that they're on, on top of that too. So, so they're advising you of, of the opportunities. And that's, that's great. And that's what I wanted to make sure, at least that.
Yes.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. So if there's no more discussion, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
With the consent calendar? Second.
Good. So we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santiness, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santiness?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Council reports. Let's start with Mr. Victor Sanchez. Have you anything you'd like to report this evening?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report. It was a pretty busy week, weekend, I would say. First off, we were able to, in, on behalf of the entire group, especially the mayor, we were able to present, when I say we, Councilmember Hamada and I were able to present Millie a certificate celebrating her hundred and seventh birthday Saturday morning. And that was a fun event held by Sandra Espinoza. It was a wonderful morning. We had representation from the Assemblywoman Christine Garcia's office. She was there herself. And as well as someone from, we had Kim Tchikichin from Congresswoman Lucia Robo-Aller's office there representing as well. So it was a really well-attended event. Later in the afternoon, Councilmember Hamada and I, I took my son to an anti-Asian hate event held in the city of Serritos. That was a very, very good event to attend. It was well-attended by the local community and surrounding cities. So we represented our city there as well. And lastly, I'll kind of, just kind of say that on Thursday, I had the fun pleasure of attending our very own Street Fest, and that was a fun event. It was definitely well-attended, you know, maybe not as pre-COVID. But I think we're, we're getting there, and it's just good to see things opening back up. And it's good to see our community enjoying themselves and really partaking in the activities. And I look forward to seeing this happen even more here in the future. Lastly, I'll end with, that's it. Thank you. Thank you of your staff for all their work. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Sunny Santiness, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things here. I, I just want to officially welcome Slice and Savor Cafe on Belmont, Belmont Street. We were there for the grand opening. And their sandwiches are good, so if you haven't tried it, please do. It's just across the post office. And secondly, I want to thank the Parks and the Creation Department for the drive-in movie and also, of course, the Street Fest. The bottom line here is Bellflower is back. So please enjoy all these festivities, especially during the summer months. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santiness. Mr. Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the fifteenth, I attended the second part of the SCAG demographic workshop. So it was all about census. So again, I think the one good take out of it was all the tools that are out there to utilize. And again, I think our staff is, and, and our consultant pretty much are, are on top of that. So great job there. On the nineteenth, I did stop by the northeast part of town to check out the Bellflower Looking Better program. The bins were filled, the big thirty-yard bins, I think three of them were filled within just a few hours. So they were carting them off very quick. I, I think before noon, well before noon. So on the twenty-third, I went to the Lake of California City's API Zoom call. And the Speaker of the Assembly, Speaker Rendon was on. And he had a quote here, "We have an incredible amount of money." Now, what are they going to do with it? That's, everyone's asking like that. So he was trying to convey what, what you could. But we'll see. I'll just leave it at that before. And on the twenty-fourth, you know, Councilman Sanchez and I were at the Homeless Shelter Subcommittee meeting. And it was, it was, it was a good assembly of residents and, and our consultants. And we had, we had some good dialogue. And I think, I think it's, there's, again, just, I mean, what I sensed, at least being there new and I see this growing, this growing support of the shelter. And, yeah, they have concerns about some of the other public safety issues that are out there, and we'll be addressing those. But, but, but when it comes to the shelter, I think they just got to work out some kinks, I think. But, and, and those were conveyed. And so I think overall, it's going to be just some great input from the community. And again, just to add on the Millie birthday, you know, one hundred and seven, again, young at heart. She is very sharp, and she has a great sense of humor. And she was cracking some jokes that got us busting. So. And again, also mentioned about the Serritos event, and I was told I made it on TV, but I had no idea.
No, I saw you.
Oh, all right. All right, whatever.
Did you record it?
No, I'm not that smart.
No, no fines at Kiwanis, no kind of stuff. But, no, again, there were parts, there were parts of it that, there was, there was some demonstrations that, that, you know, that occurred. But, you know, the sheriff kind of squashed that right on the spot. But overall, you know, it, it, it was a solid event. There was resources out there, and that's, and that's the key. I think it's getting the word and then making sure that you have, you know, access to certain resources. And there was a good number of companies out there that were serving the event. So again, it's just awesome to serve, and just we'll look forward to more of it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, you have anything for us?
Yeah, I do, Mayor. No illegal fireworks. Seems like the firework problem is three hundred and sixty-five days a year, all hours of the night from, from dark to, you know, sunup to sunrise. I mean, sundown to sunrise. The two thousand dollar fine for property owners that I mentioned will be in effect. The difference is, we used to try to actually see somebody light it. And when, when we did that, we would average eighty to a hundred and twenty tickets on Fourth of July. And that's with seeing people do it. Now, you can write a lot more tickets if you're not waiting for someone to light it off and you see it go off from a parcel. Write that address down, take a picture, and tickets in the mail. I suggest all property owners that have tenants, make their tenants aware of what's going on. That's if a firework gets lit in a backyard where nobody can see that lit. It comes out of that backyard, that house will receive a citation. We're kind of starting to try to do anything we can to be aggressive. Also, we have lots of deputies that like overtime that want that Fourth of July gig and go out there and, and help us write citations. So they'll be fully staffed with unmarked cars out there doing it. They just may drive by and see it, write the address down, put it on a list for the future citation. So it's that easy. So I suggest no illegal fireworks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. And I want to reiterate what was just said by Mr. Dutton. It's important that we keep our Fourth of July safe and minimize those that put up these fireworks that are totally illegal and cause all the issues. I guarantee when we have our next city council meeting, we'll get lots of people concerned about what has happened. But we're trying to be proactive and try to nip this in the bud before it gets out of hand. But it seems as though every year we try to do our best, it doesn't get any better. It gets worse. So we're going to try this method, see what happens, and hope for the best. But this coming month that we have but one city council meeting, it'll be held Monday, July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. And then we'll resume in August. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting at eight twenty-five in the evening to our next Bellflower City Council meeting, which will be held at five thirty PM on Monday, July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. We're adjourned.